All right, we'll call the meeting to order. Welcome everyone to our Voice for City Council meeting. It's Thursday, May 22nd. We're in trade and transit two, third floor. Please rise for the invocation followed by the flag salute.
Heavenly Father, we, we come to you tonight. And think of a world that's got issues, it's got problems that seem overwhelming at times. The Lord is important at times like this. That we remind ourselves to be thankful. Thankful for all the things that we do have, all the things we've been blessed with. Thankful as a nation. Thankful as a city. Thankful for us, by us as individuals, for all that we do have. Lord, we have an abundance. And with that comes a responsibility. That we use the abundance that we have, whether it be our time. Our money. Our help. To benefit those around us. Lord, it's important that we don't take for granted the things that we do have. But we acknowledge that we have them and that we have a responsibility to use them to benefit everyone. And Lord, with that in mind tonight, we pray for your wisdom and guidance so that we as a city council. Can do the best job that we possibly can with your help to help everyone in this city. To help those that need help. With a grateful heart. And we thank you for this, Lord, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three, approval of city council meeting minutes from May 8th, 2025. Is there a motion in a second? Any comments, questions on the minutes? Is Ms. Mealy online? Okay, it's just Mrs. Katz online, Janice. Mrs. Frank on the roll call for item three.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes six zero. Item four, limited courtesy to the floor. We've had no requests. We're going to jump around to a couple items before our presentation. Item 10, Mrs. Frank.
A resolution, engineering services for 2025 CDBG city paving.
Is there a motion in a second? So moved.
Second.
Mr. Scott, is Cedar Cog supporting your other one too?
Jamie Schrader's online from Cedar Cog.
For both of yours or just this one?
Just this one.
Lord, is yours, sir?
Good evening, Council President Yoder, members of council, Mayor Slaughter. I have a resolution to present for consideration. This resolution. Authorizes Levick Civil to provide engineering services to design roadway resurfacing improvements on six city streets. Those streets are Center Street, Memorial Avenue, Elmira Street, Third Street, Poplar Street, and Fourth Street. The engineering consists of two tasks. Task one is project design specifications and bidding for $15,000. Task two is construction supervision for 5,000 for a total not to exceed figure of $20,000. These, these design services are funded by CDBG. That's Community Development Block Grant. We put out an RFP for this project. We received six total proposals and Levick was the low bid.
Right. Sorry, I wasn't on one. Thank you, Mr. Scott, Mrs. Katz, Public Works.
Yes, we. Had this at Public Works and I think. Mr. Scott really explained what's going on and I think people are going to be very happy with, with the streets that are being paved. As we see, Little League is already finished at this point and looking wonderful and. These, these streets that are going up next, well, you know. I think it's going to be, you know, the city is going to look good. When are these going to start? Do you know, Mr. Scott?
So if we were this tonight, it's going to be three, four weeks to do the design specifications. Then you have another three, four weeks of bidding. So right there, it's going to be after Little League. I don't want to start it before, you know, Little League. It'll be after Little League.
Okay, so this is a project that could be not done until next year then?
Oh, no, it's definitely going to be done this year. Absolutely.
Well, okay, all right. Okay, fantastic. Um, I don't know if anybody else on Public Works has anything to say? Vince, Randy?
Mr. Pelizzi.
Thank you. No, Mr. Scott, real quick, just remind me, because I accidentally put all my actual paperwork in recycling, so I'm going through my digital files. I don't have my notes. What were the six streets that are going to be up for paving?
Okay, so Center Street from High Street to Memorial Avenue, then Memorial Avenue Walnut Street to Center Street, then Elmira Street, Park Avenue to Kramer's Court. Then Third Street from Arch Street to Poplar, then Poplar from Wester to Federal, and then Fourth Street downtown will be from Mulberry to Hepburn Street.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions from members? Mr. Mr. Bider.
The section of Fourth Street from Mulberry to Hepburn. Is that the state's responsibility? Is that the city's responsibility?
It's city street.
It is a city street there. Okay.
Yep.
Um, it's not listed, but Mayor Slaughter, I know somebody from First Street reached out about the idea of paving over the brick streets on the, I think the latter portion of First Street. Well, I mean, I, I think, I know that would get your ears perked up, John. You're, you're welcome. Um, no, in all seriousness, I mean, I, I think, I don't know if it, if we're able to add. To this at this time without a price increase, but I think sooner than later, we should consider that street. Especially with the development kind of happening there. I mean, I've already driven by there myself. When I'm using Wawa and as I will use Chick-fil-A, I would anticipate there's going to be more traffic going out that back. And whether it's Campbell, whether it's the next one up Walnut to get out of there, it's just going to be a lot cleaner. And those brick streets are awful, right? So I don't know if that was considered for this project or if we're thinking of that for the, the next cycle. Either's fine. I just wanted to. It was a recent dialogue, so I just wanted to bring it up and kind of see where that might be at.
Yeah, we weren't considering that for this one per se. It came up fairly recently, so that's likely would be on the next round after we have conversation. I didn't want to.
Yeah.
Just include it without. Having conversation with everyone, including the local, you know, neighborhood there.
Yeah.
That are on the brick street. There, there is, there are a few residential homes right there. So. But I mean, it is in, as you said, in disarray. I mean, the bricks are pretty bad.
Yeah, it's, it's in disarray. And again, I think in addition to the higher probability of more traffic going through there. I think it's something we should highly consider for the next cycle. To your point, Mayor Slaughter, I think it's a great idea to engage the, the residents right there. I would encourage you to, to pursue that absolutely. And then we'll see where it kind of goes for the next cycle. I appreciate the feedback.
Absolutely, and commercial traffic as well.
Yep.
With the industrial business that's there now.
Yep. Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? Mr. Allison?
Mr. Scott, you, you mentioned paving over the brick. Is that what?
Not, not in this contract, no, no.
Yeah, we had doors.
There was an individual on First Street that reached out to the mayor. They connected me and I forwarded it all to all of you, so you were all aware of it. The, it's, it's, I think from Lumber Street to Walnut Street specifically, it's, it's in pretty rough shape, right? And so whether it's today's brick or it's paved over. Either way, I think it's definitely something that needs to be addressed. And I think kind of what they're looking at, I think, is too bold. Does it make sense to either re-brick it or pave over it? And then secondarily, I shouldn't say secondarily, in addition to that, engaging the, the residents to see. What, what their individual, individual views are, how one or the other would impact. So they're doing some investigative work to it. I was simply just asking. Using this to ask kind of where that's at.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it was a business owner that asked for us to explore it. So we're at this point, I'm not sitting here advocating, as President Yoder said, for paving over it. Okay. It's just that it does need addressed, whether we keep it brick, you know, it just, it has some significant issues right now. So we, we do need to take a look at it, but I wanted to have the, before we, the administration made any decisions, I wanted to have the conversation. So I. Connected it with President Yoder and so we could start the dialogue.
It's the pave lasts longer. The brick isn't underneath.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I, so, yeah.
But yeah. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Maggie?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, you opened the, the can, so.
I did.
Uh, well, I'd just say I, I will advocate for paving over that section of street. I'm curious, do we engage with any other residents in the city when we pave their streets? I'm just curious. Because let's be honest, just because you live on a brick street, doesn't mean you get to dictate. What the city does. With their streets, right? Like, I mean.
Well, I mean, I would.
It's, it's, it's a hazard of, of potentially buying a house on a brick street, knowing that it could potentially be paved over at some point.
Right.
While you own the home. I'm just curious if we're going to start engaging with residents on how paving a street affects them. I think that's maybe a road. A paved road we don't want to go down.
Well, I think I've, I've gone down the Pot Hoble Road quite a few times, but so I would say that to answer that to a degree, yes. I mean, we get a number of phone calls. I think I, I send. Quite a few emails to Bill with people that reach out that lived on, that live currently on paved streets. I actually had a phone call on my way here tonight where the curbing is sort of deteriorating. It's a paved street, but the, by two minutes curbing, so.
No, I.
I mean, I understand what you're saying is that if we're considering looking at a street, a brick street, but I think just out of respect for that neighborhood that. If they're on, if they bought the house. With the brick street in mind, I think just out of courtesy, we should. I, I, now I know what you're saying, John. Am I going to go around here every single? But we do communicate with folks that have issues on their streets. Yeah, I mean, if it's a paved street.
Those are two different conversations. Of course, we want to communicate with our residents, right? But. It's, it's almost like saying if you live on a brick street, you're a little, you're just a little bit more important than people that don't live on a brick street because it's somehow going to affect your property value. Like I, you know. I, I, I'm, I'm simply asking the question. It's something to think about.
Yeah, and I think the answer to, to a certain extent is yes. I mean, we were just up in the northern part of the city, not long ago, actually, looking at a paved street, but your point is well taken, but I would say yes on both fronts.
Any other comments or questions by members? Appreciate the dialogue, everybody. All right, here you can see none. The Mrs. Frank on item 10, please.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes six zero. We will jump to item 13.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Resolution to approve substantial amendments to fiscal years 2019, 2020, 2021, 2022 annual action plan.
Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second, motion in a second, Mr. Williams. Good evening, sir. Welcome to the podium.
Good evening, council. Are you all staying dry? Trick question. No one's staying dry this spring.
Well played.
So first item I have for you this evening is a resolution to approve substantial amendments to four years of our annual action plans for CDBG and home funding. To move some unexpended funds forward to apply to current projects. And I believe we do have Jamie Schrader on the line if there are any specific questions about this.
Um, this went to finance, Mr. Bider. I'll turn it over to you to add any kind of feedback on the conversation in committee. It did. One of the first things that I will mention is we have two that are going to be from Cedar Cog tonight that have to do with a substantial amendment and a minor amendment, and a minor amendment, excuse me. And then I will let Jamie, since that is her area of expertise, explain what the difference is and then also explain what the monies are being moved forward to as far as specific projects.
Sure, thank you very much. So we have some funds that were not expended on the activities they were allocated to, so those are being moved to current activities. So for instance, in your 2019 CV funding. You have funds that were not used for administration that are being put into Newberry Park. And then you also have funds that were a repayment to, on the basketball court resurfacing project that are also being allocated to Newberry Park. Regular 2019 funding, there was a repayment of funds to the SPCA as a result of a HUD monitoring. Those are being put into Little League Boulevard. On 2020, you have another repayment of SPCA as a result of that monitoring as well as funds from a couple of completed projects. For housing rehab that are being moved to Little League Boulevard. 2021, there are leftover funds in various projects that are being put in Elm Park and then the same for 2022, leftover funds from completed projects being put into Elm Park.
That about covers everything that we went over then. Okay. Any comments or questions from members? Okay, here you see none. Mrs. Frank, item 13 is.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes seven zero. Item 14, Mrs. Frank.
Resolution to approve a minor amendment for fiscal years 2019 CV annual action plan to CDBG.
Motion in a second?
So moved.
Second, Mr. Williams.
So this is a minor amendment to our 2019 CDBG annual action plan to move some funds from, that were originally budgeted for admin over to project delivery.
Any comments or questions? Anything to add, Mr. Bider, sorry?
No, that's great. Jamie, if you wouldn't mind for the rest of council and for the public's sake, explaining the difference between a substantial amendment and a minor amendment, please?
Sure thing. So a minor amendment basically means that we aren't creating any new activities. We aren't eliminating any activities. And we're not dealing with anything like program income or repayment of funds. So this is basically taking funds. From CV administration that were not used and putting them into Newberry Park, which is also a current project. So. Because those are two existing projects and we're not doing any of those things I just mentioned, we can just do what's called a minor amendment. We don't have to go through the advertising or the public hearing. We can simply get council approval.
Wonderful, thank you for that.
Sure.
Any additional comments, questions on this item? Okay, here you can see none. The Mrs. Frank on item 14.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes seven zero. Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Thank you.
Um, we will jump back up to item five. We have a presentation on some current work going on with the redevelopment authority. So I'll welcome. Ms. Jen Matts to the podium to kind of lead the presentation. Welcome. Good evening. Looking forward to hearing what's going on with the RDA.
Thank you very much. And. President Yoder, council members, appreciate the ability to come and. Put our presentation before you in regards to. What the redevelopment authority has achieved and what our obstacles are. William Sport Redevelopment Authority and Land Bank is here before you today to discuss blight in the city. And until recently, we did not have the resources to attack the blighted property issue, and now we do. We have approximately 20, $2.3 million in grant funds available to refurbish blighted properties. And the authority has already identified and begun action and refurbishment on some of these properties. In order to proceed with refurbishment of properties, it is essential that the city properly identify and declare properties blighted. This requires a strong codes department. A codes department that has a certified, that is, has certified professionals in citing properties that are in serious code violations. And these do exist throughout the city. It requires a codes department that acts aggressively within the bounds of the law. To cite and declare properties as blighted. Once a property is declared blighted by the city per the activities of the codes department, then and only then. Does the authority have the leverage to act either through negotiations with the property owner? Or through a process of eminent domain so that we may take control of the property and properly rehab it. All cities have blight within them. And certainly it goes far beyond, the concerns go far beyond the aesthetic. Blighted properties create unsafe conditions for our firefighters, our policemen, our residents, and also children especially. And blighted properties can also attract crime. Pest infestations, drug use, and overall, they put an undue burden on the. Other neighbors in the neighborhood of that property. With a concern for their own safety and their property's safety as well as the decline in their own property value. The authority, through our experience of rehabilitating blighted properties, estimates that each property. Requires about a 2,000, this is just the introduction, but yeah, we'll get to that. $200,000 per property. To bring it back onto the tax rolls. Once the authority rehabs it properly, it can then be sold and the funds can be reinvested into the program. Which basically makes a renewal cycle for our funding. In this matter, the authority believes it may be able to rehabilitate upwards of 50 properties. And increase the fair market value of those properties by as much as $10 million. What that translates into is tax revenue increase estimated to be approximately $408,000. Divided between the three taxing authorities being the city, the county, and the school district. To accomplish that goal, however, we need consistent, timely, professional, certified, and quality code operations. Which acting within the bounds of the law will aggressively pursue the blight, the blight certification on properties within the city. And that is why we are here today to make city council aware of our most pressing issue so that we can work together. In making Williamsport a better place to live, invest in, play, and work. So I would like to introduce the board members. We have our board members here. Many of them are here. We have an executive director, as you can see, as you, many of you well know, Skip Memmy. Tom McDermott has been our vice chair, Jade Walton, our secretary, Don Lundie is a board member as well as Carol White. And then we have counsel of Doug Engelman and Blake Marks. We've assembled a team of consultants, construction consultant, appraisal consultant, engineer. Property codes advisor, IT services, and real estate, as you can see from the slide. And we have provided you a copy of that. The LDR, the RDA was created. Really to foster the economic development of Williamsport and to bring new business and employment to the city. One of the crucial elements of achieving that goal is sustainable housing. One blighted property can reduce the value of neighboring properties by as much as 15 to 20%. And when that happens, you don't find other adjoining property owners interested in putting an investment into their property, which becomes basically the one rotten apple. Blight will increase, property values decrease, lowering, lowering, or elevating. The stress on the tax base, but by reducing blight, we increase the property values and thereby lower the stress on the tax base. We move to the next slide. Why blight matters? First of all, there is a safety issue for residents and as I mentioned for our first responders, recently I was at a blighted property review meeting and the firefighters spoke. In at length about. The probability of injury being greater for entering a blighted property that was in disrepair than actually fighting the fire. That's where a large majority of firefighter injuries occur. This does invite crime, drug use, weapons, squatting. Infestation is also a problem when you have either, you know, a feral colony of something living there. In addition to that, again, I'll go back to the aesthetics. When a new business or a new potential resident is looking at the, at the city. When you see blighted properties sitting next to beautiful properties, and I would, I would highlight the, the top of Hepburn and Market as. An example, I think we all drive up there often enough. Beautiful properties, terrible condition. We lessen our ability to project. The beautiful city that we are by, by simple eyesores. I mentioned the psychological toll on the neighbors for sure. Many live next to burnout houses or houses that have no bill code door, no railings on exterior staircases, and if you have children around, children are naturally curious. I myself am naturally curious and would be inclined to go inspect that. That is a liability risk and also an injury risk to anyone who lives nearby. Give me a moment here. So. We would like to. Address the idea, the primary issues, again, safety. We said that, you know, crime and other indecent activity can take place in blighted properties which, once certified, they are not vacated, or they are not. They are vacated properties. There is no one living in them. They are sitting simply and rotting. This disincentivizes again the neighborhood from maintaining their properties and becomes a breeding ground again for animals and pestilence. And go to the next slide. The numbers on this slide, as I mentioned, we were talking about approximately $200,000 to be invested in a property to bring it back on the tax rolls. There are 13,700 residential units within the city and. Having those blighted properties. Rehabilitated through the redevelopment authority would be an investment again of the funding that we have of approximately $200,000. But then that increases the real estate taxable real estate value by an estimated $10 million. And then you can look at the distribution of what that benefits both the county, the, the school district, and for our concern also the city. And, you know, $407,000, $407,900 is, is nothing to sneeze at or to dismiss, and I believe it's a wise investment for the city. In addition, that is pretty much what I have to say on that because it's pretty self-evident and that is in within your packet. If we can go to slide six. Again, when we looked at the safety issues, this highlights, I mean, you may recognize some of these properties. They've been sitting there for some of them, almost a decade. And nothing has been done. So we look at the, the risk of unsecured. Properties, we look at the risks of illegal dumping, fires, drugs, et cetera, vagrancy, squatting. But what the city also has to take a look at is the liability that we share. Sometimes we're not able to locate a homeowner right away and that property sits in disrepair, but once we are aware of it, whether passively or actively, we sit. In a, in a position of liability, should an injury occur on there. And so therefore we are looking. And so therefore, we are looking to expedite this in a more streamlined way. There is no real excuse for a property to be sitting in a blighted condition, you know, for a year, two years, three years, and much less a decade. The property on the upper right hand of this is, that fire occurred in 2015, we are in 2025. And I understand that there have been difficulties there, but a decade is a little extreme as far as resolving an issue. And again, I have to point out that the liability aspect, when there is a code violation or other hazard, whether it is known or unknown by the officials, this again makes the city somewhat liable as a passive participant of allowing that hazardous condition to exist. Go to the next slide. The RDA is only able to act in conjunction with other agencies. We cannot simply drive around the neighborhoods and find properties, identify them, and then remedy them. We are highly dependent upon the city, as I mentioned, to act via the Department of Codes to cite these properties, review these properties, and then recommend the certification of blight. It's one thing to have a property in disrepair, maybe some paint is bad, or maybe some lawns need to be mowed. It's another to have, again, attractive nuisances and complete structural instability sitting year after year after year. An ineffective codes team creates delays in our blight certification. And that is a problem for us at this point. As many of you know, we have ARPA funds which need to be expended by the end of 2026. And acquiring a property either through eminent domain or negotiating with the owner takes time. These don't happen because we decided, you know, it can take six, nine months in order to acquire a property, let alone the time it takes to refurbish it. Without the enforcement, we really don't have anything to have teeth with. You know, we have the money now, but we also, we really need that streamlined certification of blight. And go to the next slide. So now we get to our first project with the ARPA funds, which is 2169 Moser Avenue. This was a fire which occurred in 2018. The property is, as you can see, part of a row house, there are four units in that row house. That sat for years with, I'm sure the mayor's phone ringing from the neighbors who were not very happy about what was happening to the rest of the units in this because, you know, this is a unique property in that it is a row house. And what we did, when I mentioned at the beginning that we assembled a team of people from our contractor to our appraiser, we acquired this property and went to work getting it rehabilitated. Again, it sat for years and there were a lot of neighbor complaints. Next slide. These are pictures of the inside of it. As you can see, it was completely burned out, the stairs to the basement were treacherous at best. It was a hideous property. And these are the befores, obviously. Everybody loves a good before and after, and we can make that happen. Can you go to the next slide, please? Now, if you take a look at this, some of you have visited the property and we welcome you to do so. It is currently up for sale. We had an offer put in yesterday, we are negotiating that and hope to have it sold very soon. Because that money then, as I mentioned, gets recirculated into the cycle that we are, since we have the seed money from the ARPA funds, we intend to make this a regenerative fund so we can continue to address the blight in the city. The purchase, you know, once we were able to negotiate with the owner, this was not an eminent domain problem. But not only were we able to take that from the homeowner, we were also able to do some minor improvements to the sidewalks for the other neighbors, which was greatly appreciated. And we also rid ourselves a lot of squirrels and pigeons. It was quite inhabited. Next slide, please. Then we have Park Avenue. The city demolished this property because it was structurally unsound and there was a risk of collapse. Redevelopment Authority paid off that lien to the city. And now we have that lot. We are taking a different approach since there is not a building to rehabilitate. And we will be putting a modular home in there that will be a different, as I said, a different approach. But we have the funds to do it. And that puts another property back on the tax rolls in a desirable area with a, what, two-bedroom, two-bath home with the potential of putting a third bedroom in the basement. It's innovative, it's a different approach again for this area. But we're looking forward to seeing that home come in and be set somewhere in July. Next, please. That's Park Avenue before they tore it down. Continue. Then we have 1615 Market Street. And if you are not familiar with it, it's a property that sits immediately north of the community center that First Church has on Market Street. If you drive up Market Street and look off to your left, maybe not right now because the trees are starting to fill in, but any other time of the year, you'll notice an enormous hole in the top of that roof. We went into the property, we chased, we hired a PI to find out who owned it. It took us quite some time to figure this out. But when we were able to access it, the house is saturated with water, black mold, dead pigeons all over the place. And this is just, it's a shame because this isn't something that happened overnight. This is something that could have been addressed many, many times over the years and simply has not. Again, there is concern for safety, there's a pre-K that sits right next to it. And in addition to that, this is a primary street in our city that people travel frequently. Our city should not be looking like this. Next slide, please. Inside, these are some of the inside pictures. I mean, I have them on my phone too because I have a curiosity to walk in these places. And I was astounded that something sat there for that long. I can't wait to see it torn down, truly. Next slide, please. That's some more of the back, there are Tupperware containers all throughout to try to catch the water. It has just been a mess. We now have possession of this property and will be demolishing it. We want to take into consideration the schedule of Steinbockers, which we already have the demolition permit. But the soapbox derby is rapidly approaching and we're not sure if we can get it done before then, so sometime soon. And then there will be a lot for sale. Again, this is cleaning up the city, especially the highly visible parts, that's where we're starting. Next slide, please. So the true cost of delay, what does it matter if we let these things sit? I mean, we know they're not going to heal themselves or improve themselves. But what does matter is we lose the revenue of these properties. We lose the potential of the housing of these. We set ourselves up for unsafe conditions. And in addition to that, as we all know, the price of lumber rarely comes down, nor does the price of labor. So the costs that we've estimated of $200,000 for each of these properties that we would like to address, we believe is pretty accurate. Now, had they been dealt with, you know, five, 10 years ago, maybe that would have been a different cost. But we're dealing with it as we stand. So it's something to truly take into consideration in the streamlining of this process. Next slide, please. These are pictures that we have of various properties throughout the city. You may recognize some of them from driving by them. The process again is for the city to use the codes department to effectively, efficiently, and in a timely manner, certify these properties as blighted, move them on to planning to certify that blight, move them back to the committee of blighted, that they come then to the redevelopment authority. We are highly dependent, we're completely dependent upon this process. And with the money that we have, I think it's incumbent upon everyone to make the most efficient process as possible in the most professional way with certified, qualified codes enforcement. Next slide. These are more properties, these are some of them that sit up on Upper Fourth Street. And I'm sure if you're a person who lives in the city and you walk a dog, take a walk through anything, you can probably pinpoint some in your own neighborhoods or surrounding neighborhoods that also could use some remediation and return to the tax rolls. Next slide, please. There's more examples. You know, I called the second one in, I call it the Tyvek Home because I remember when they started working on that years ago. And now the Tyvek has pretty much blown completely off of it because it hasn't been addressed. Next slide, please. So when the process works, you end up with a property like we have on Moser Avenue. Happy neighbors, beautiful property, very modernized, everything that you would want in it. We do look forward to giving you a report on the sale of that and how that whole process went. And again, to recap the money that came to us from the grant so that we can sustain this process of cleaning up the city. Next slide. So our path forward, we are suggesting retaining qualified, certified enforcement professionals, dedicated professionals who can issue violations and facilitate rapid action forward. We'd like to streamline these RDA approvals through the blighted property and the body of codes. We are finding that, when we spoke about the bottleneck, that this is not an efficient process as currently stands. And there's a large backlog on these properties. We would like better coordination, you know, with council to let you know because we truly appreciate that you had the foresight to allocate money to us to allow us to do the job that we are designed to do. I believe the board, we have a fantastic board. Our members are interested in our projects, they show up regularly to our meetings. There are a lot of conversations outside of meetings just to keep things moving along. You have an engaged board of volunteers. And I would ask that you do consider what we can do to streamline and make codes enforcement more effective, efficient, professional, certified, and qualified. I thank you for your time. Are there any questions? Are there any questions?
Jen, thank you for the presentation. Any questions, comments for members, Mr. Allison?
Do we have a record of how many of these properties are, were still on the tax rolls or?
I'm sure that we can locate that, but what we're finding is when we look at a property and it's brought to us, we like to look at the record of citation, how long it's been in the blighted condition. And to say that it is ineffective at this point is quite an understatement.
Absolutely. The other question I had was if, you mentioned the codes several times. Is this a job that can be done internally with our codes? Or do we need a firm like Barry Isid or something like that to accomplish that?
I believe that that would be the determination of council. What I am presenting to you and what the board is presenting to you is a history of unaddressed issues from the city's arm, which is the codes department, that have allowed us to accumulate a vast amount of blighted properties. And again, losing out on revenue, losing out on housing. And I don't believe that the way it is structured at this point is effective.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Mealy had a question, she's online, but I'll open the floor for her.
Sorry about that, this interface with the phone is not perfect. Thanks, Adam. Jen, I wanted to know, it seems as though the RDA is primarily focusing on residential properties right now. But I think, I know at least that I had hoped, and I think that some others on council had hoped, that we would also look at commercial properties. Especially because I think that I'm slightly concerned about us being able to recoup our investment in some of these properties with residential values being what they are in the city. What do you think about that?
There has been discussion, we've spoken, we have counsel of Doug Engelman and Blake, I can't remember your last name on the spur of the moment, but anyway. We have discussed this and we had discussed with Derek also, the mayor, that we would like to get into commercial properties because certainly there is backlog of those too. And that brings industry, but I would suggest that residential and commercial should go hand in hand because if we're going to increase the commercial, the use of those commercial buildings and then ideally have people employed and living in the city, we also need to have some housing stock. And aside from having that housing stock, we have to make sure that it is not sitting in an area where there's an eyesore of a property or a hazard right there that discourages people from buying properties within the city. We already know we are surrounded by boroughs and townships that have lower taxes and may be more desirable. We would like to attract people to live in the city. It's a beautiful city, it has so many things to offer. So I believe that that commercial needs to be in conjunction. And as we are using these ARPA funds currently, we started with residential. We would love to get into commercial and we'll seek the direction on how we can do that. And Skip is making his way to expand on that.
Counselwoman Mealy, the problem is so far that the codes department has not brought any commercial or industrial properties to the blighted property committee for the blighted property committee to make a decision and have them deemed blighted without us being, having that determination. Even if we went through eminent domain, we can do use eminent domain at any time, but it has to be for a public purpose. So that means a park, that might mean a parking lot. But if we have the blighted determination made, then we can go in and we can acquire the property, we can rehab it, we can put it back out to be sold and to have new industry or new opportunities within the city happen. But until we have deemed properties in the industrial and commercial world, we're stuck with doing only residential problems.
And it is under the purview of blighted property now. It's been a few years, I think Councilman Plissey, when we first got here, those of us that came in, initially blighted property was only residential. But the blighted property commission updated it maybe 2020 or 2021, I don't remember exactly when. But they do have it now to include commercial and industrial. So I would wholeheartedly agree that, and I think as you're looking at this $2 million, I think that's another point they were making, that we could spend it a little more quickly. So I would agree.
Yeah, I think that we should maybe, I would welcome maybe a smaller conversation at some point between some members of council and the mayor and the redevelopment authority. Only because I think there are a handful of properties in the city that might be considered kind of killing two birds with one stone. Something that could become a larger project than a single residential unit. But you know what I mean, that maybe doesn't qualify, it's exclusively commercial or certainly not industrial. But I, anyway, I think my line of thinking on this is, I know the only project we've seen come through from the redevelopment authority at this point, or at least that I've seen, and I haven't been able to make every meeting recently, is the one, the building that is directly next to First Church. And it seems to me that we were estimating that the redevelopment authority was going to spend $125,000 on that. And that the appraised value of the parcel was actually more like $25,000. And my fear there is that we have put a decent amount of money into the redevelopment authority. But if we spend it on projects like that where we're losing 80% of the value, yes, it is valuable for the city to turn those parcels around, and I would never dispute that. I'm not disputing that as a good line of work. But if those are the only, if we're only pursuing projects where we're losing money through the RDA, then, and the city, as I think we cover at nearly every council meeting, is not likely to have additional funds to put into the RDA, we're going to wind up emptying that coffer that we established. And what we really, what we need to focus on somehow is both, is recouping funds that we are investing in parcels so that we have that money to put back into reinvestment in the community. I mean, ideally, we're growing an endowment of sorts there. But if we're not doing that, I think we need to try as hard as we can to But if we're not doing that, I think we need to try as hard as we can to get the monies back that we are expending on properties so that we can, so that, so that we can continue to do good within the community. And I also think that, that all of us are probably fairly aware that residential properties are certainly generating a huge amount of the city's tax base, but industrial ones and commercial ones are clearly doing even more of that. So a commercial project through the RDA would have the potential to have a big impact on the city's tax base that residential ones will not. None of this is me saying that I don't think that you all are doing good work, and I'm delighted that you are doing what you are doing. But I think that we as an administration, as a council, need to work on providing the RDA with the tools to take on bigger projects because we, we need to use some of that pot of funding to take on bigger projects. And we need that kind of seismic change in the city's tax base. We also need it because I think, while I agree with you, Jen, that if we put, that we need, that we need housing and we need, we need cleaned up neighborhoods, I think that having enough people looking for housing in the city will provide a reason for developers to invest in building housing. That is to say, having, having, having a strong housing need in the city can, can help us to revitalize those neighborhoods in the same way that the redevelopment authority eliminating, eliminating blighted properties can. And so I think it's kind of an all, all hands on deck sort of thing from my perspective. I think that's everything I have to say on the issue. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Mealy. Mr. Mackey.
Thank you. Jen, how are you? Is it, and is it Mimi or Memmy?
Memmy.
I'm, I'm, that was a joke. For the longest time, I had to correct everybody on how to pronounce your last name. First of all, obviously, you're all with the RDA. If, is, who else here is with the RDA? If you could just raise your hand, I, I know some of you, okay. Thank you for serving on that board. I really appreciate the time that you've put into this. So I got a couple of questions. Some of them might not be easy to ask, but I'm going to ask them anyway because we're having this conversation, is a good time to ask them. I guess the first question I have could, for the, for the good of maybe even myself, some people in the room, could you, in a perfect world, let's, let's pretend it's a perfect world with the top of the line codes department, everything's running on all cylinders. How, what's this process look like? What, first of all, how does it, how do we get to a blighted property so that the RDA can actually act on it? And then what's that process look like? And then, once you have the, the ability to do something, how long in a perfect world would that process take? Acquiring, either rehabbing, you know, doing something with that property?
If we had, in a perfect world, the violations lined up, the citations completed, having gone to the district magistrate, having gone through that whole process, and then we would have the leverage to go negotiate and/or acquire through eminent domain, we could acquire a property probably within 30 to 60 days, rehab it, depends on what we do. If we're tearing it down because it's structurally unsound or unsafe, we can tear it down in a matter of weeks and then start a modular unit on it and probably get that completed within six months. So in a, in a period of six to nine months, we could do multiple properties. Getting back to the commercial and residential, we have no leverage because we know of no properties that have been issued codes violations to the point where they have been brought to the blighted property committee as of yet.
Well, so that. That brings me back to the initial question, and this would have been, I mean, it would have been a good night for Gary to be here, I suppose. How, how long does it take? Can somebody from the administration, I don't know, Sam, and somebody, how long does it take? How many citations does it take to get a property to the blighted? Like, how, can, can somebody explain that process? And, and, and then I have a couple of follow ups to that.
I would suggest that that's probably a better question for Mr. Nard to answer. But the good part, or, or the part that we kind of miss, if we had a process of working on code violations and doing property maintenance inspections all throughout the city on a annualized basis, the fact is, you wouldn't have anywhere near the number of blighted properties you have today. When they get to the point of blight, then it's going to take citations, then it takes the district magistrate, then it takes other citations, depending on how the district magistrate addresses the problem. That could take months. If we can get to a streamlined process, which is what we're talking about tonight, we could probably reduce that to 60 days. But right now, this, the process is, is long, it's inefficient, and, you know, unfortunately, our, our codes department, not throwing anybody under the bus, but it's been going on for decades, they're working with two, three, maybe even four different softwares, and none of those softwares talk to each other. So when they issue a code, it might be in this program, and someone else goes in and uses a different program, and no one knows what's going on.
So. So it goes to blighted, codes gets into blighted, blighted could give, you know, the homeowner may show up to the blighted property committee meeting, they could give them 30 days to say, hey, you, we're going to give you X amount of time to address your porch falling down. If they don't, obviously, then after that, time period is expired. It could then go to the RDA, they could go back and ask the homeowner what happens. But then that process does take a little bit. The worst of the worst, generally what we're talking about with most of these properties that Jen brought up during the presentation, most of those homeowners likely are not going to appeal and try to drag it out because of just the complete disrepair that the property is in. And then on the other side of the coin, now that the RDA does have some leverage and some money, you know, hopefully, some of these property owners are motivated to actually fix it up on their own, knowing that we do have the funds to acquire the property. But that's sort of the process there. It gives a little back and.
I just got my answers here.
Got it.
So I, thank you, Councilman Pulizzi. Okay, so. I, I mean, I hate to ask the question, but, well, let me, let me ask you this. Do our codes officers keep a, a log of the things that they do throughout the day? I'm assuming Assistant Chief Bolt, when our police officers answer a call, do they have a written log of the time they took the call, where they went, what time they came back into service?
Yeah, for, for the Williamsburg Bureau of Police.
Right, right.
We do have a records management system that tracks all that.
But they, in their cars, they actually have a clipboard with a piece of paper.
No.
No?
Back in the day, it used to be a clipboard.
That's how.
Yeah, we have computers.
Okay, all right. But, but we're, we're keeping track.
Yes.
So does the codes department keep track of the things that they do?
They're supposed to be. They have software and they have, and they have iPads and all.
And, and are we, and who, who is responsible for looking at these logs and making sure that the codes department is out doing things and proactive, actively, proactively? I mean.
Yeah, right now, Gary Nard is overseeing them.
And again, I, as Skip said, I'm throwing somebody in. I mean, maybe it's time to start throwing some people under the bus here, right? Like, I, I'm just being honest. Because this is concerning, right? We, we, we put this money, we put this ARPA money into this account for this specific reason, it's not being spent. And you just explained to us why it's not being spent, right? So.
But it will be spent before December 31st, 2026. We are now initiating a project which will be a probably four to five home, series of row homes up on High Street, which we're looking to acquire, probably demo and rebuild on those. And if that all comes to fruition in the next couple of months, like we're anticipating, by the first of the year, we'll have four new homes up on High Street near the rescue workers, and there are other ones right up there. But in the meantime, the blighted property committee, as of yes, as of yesterday, did forward to us three or four more projects that have been deemed blighted that we're going to go after at our next meeting. So before July of next year, we plan to have the majority of the ARPA grant funds expended.
Okay.
And I would just caution to a degree about personnel. We could, some of it might have to go in executive session because we can't publicly go into the weeds on personnel, just, I don't, from a high level. I mean, we can have this, the conversation, obviously, but to get into actual personnel matters would probably need to be, I'll leave that up to attorney, the attorneys, but.
John, any other questions? John, any other questions? Sorry.
No.
Any other questions? I have a couple, but I don't want to seal the floor from others. So just a couple of thoughts. I mean, this was insightful for me and, and appreciated. You know, when I, when I look at the kind of path forward pieces, there's really three actions I think you're, you're kind of looking at here, right? From my perspective, two of these are management oriented, right? Retain qualified, certified enforcement professionals. You know, I guess come budget time, you know, legislatively, we've got some impact on that. But outside of that, you know, it's really a day to day management thing. And then I see better coordination here. I can tell you, just from trying to educate myself on things on the administrative side, I'm of the impression that there are other kind of like legal barriers that I think codes runs into that kind of bottleneck them. What I would encourage you, Derek, Gary to do is kind of sit down together and really start at least that better coordination, because I think through that better coordination, hopefully, we see some of kind of the first bullets start to get worked out proactively. Derek, I, I would ask you to try to spearhead that sooner than later. And then I think with that first one, you know, it seems like there's a continued challenge in this department. I mean, this challenge predates everybody here, right? I remember my neighbors talking about this when I bought my house in 2017, for example, right? When we put Gary in charge of that department, it was with the idea of, well, hey, look, let's get a fresh face in there. And additionally, try to maximize synergies between zoning and codes. My initial perception is, you know, I, I'm worried that he's probably got too much on his plate to where he's not maybe able to do that as effectively as we thought he may be able to, right? I've got a lot of confidence in Gary. I think he's got good skills. I think he's done a great job from a zoning perspective, but maybe both together is not the best approach. That's probably something the administration needs to look at as we get into budget time as well. The third piece of this is streamlining approvals. We've touched on that a little bit. If there's specifics that were discussed, I missed them in the mix of just trying to kind of pay attention here. That's probably the area where I think council can do things rather, rather quickly and effectively outside of actually managing employees, which is not our scope. So, you know, are there specific tangible things from a legal perspective of city ordinances, fines, et cetera, that you have that we could look at and explore to try to actually change legislation, what have you? That's really where I think we will be the most help to you.
Well, the, the, the fines and fees is one thing, and I know Councilman Pulizzi, I believe, was working on that a little bit to increase various violations. So that's definitely.
Yep.
One area that could have a little more impact if it's, you know, goes from a hundred dollars to.
Yeah.
You know, 500 or whatever the case might be, but go ahead.
But, but it only has impact if a, if a citation is issued and someone signs it and their badge number is on that, and then there's a follow up, which we are finding there is none of that in a lot of the properties that we're dealing with, again, that have been there for years. And again, it's not an individual responsibility, it is a department responsibility. And perhaps that department has never run efficiently for whatever reason, spread too thin, not certified in the things that they need to be certified in, in, in terms of being able to issue certain violations. I, I don't, I don't know the whole of it. But what I know right now is it is not serving, whatever the structure is, is not serving this city. Again, if I, you know, went back to the slide where I'm showing you, we can, we can invest in these properties, we can raise the, the taxable value of these properties and, and bring in, in essence, $408,000 between those three taxing bodies. That is worth a reevaluation of any department that is involved, any board that is involved in remediating this blight. You know, if, if, if the span of the department is such that it can't do what needs to be done effectively with money that has been allocated to us, that, you know, if we don't, what do we give it back at the end and then pay taxes on? I mean, that, it's a silly, silly thing to be able to have this kind of budget and not have the most efficient way to take a look at a property, know that it's blighted, know that, that there are citations. And, you know, I, I suppose the argument has been made that, you know, the magistrates prolong it and everything, and I hear all that. I'm more interested in, okay, that's fine, then let's educate the magistrates, which I believe isn't, is being attempted to be done so that we can get a better flow with them as well. But every single entity that deals with this process needs to be efficient, effective, timely, and qualified.
Now, and look, I appreciate that. Like I said, you know, that's really a, it's really a management scope that outside of really the budget process.
Sure.
We don't really have a lot of ability to really help you. And so like I said, when I kind of look at that second bullet point, specifically streamlining process, I mean, that's something that we would need to do. And, and, and so I'd be really interested to kind of understand more of that. And so I, you know, I think there's probably some things that we'll probably ask of the codes department out of this. And, and we'll do that. But one thing I would ask from you as the RDA is, what are the, you know, tangible things that need to change in the process? Not including codes that are additional barriers, right? I certainly understand the codes component that you're talking about, but there are, it seems to me, multiple other barriers that seem to exist as well. And, you know, for, from our perspective, we're able to help you on some of those other ones, process related. So I'd be really interested to understand tangibly what they are, so we could maybe start to take some steps to do those concurrently with what hopefully comes from the administration on any of the management focused items. So, and the sooner you get that to us, the sooner we can start to look through it and take action on it.
As Councilwoman Mealy had mentioned, you know, perhaps this, this warrants additional conversations, you know, just smaller conversations to figure out and really explore. Obviously, she is interested in the commercial, as are we. But if we're dealing with the same, you know, the fact that we don't have anything certified, blighted, and commercial, we can't even look at it. There's, there's no, you know, we can, we can drive around the city and look at multiple buildings that sit vacant for year after year after year and are not being utilized for anything and become eyesores. But without that, the impetus for everything is codes. We could, we are, we, we cannot act, it's like they are the starting line and we can't get to the third spot and to, unless we are starting at the starting line with them and having them move us on. So that, that is the major crux of this. But thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Appreciate you being here, appreciate the dialogue. This was super insightful for me, I think for most everybody else here. See what we can do.
Absolutely. And thank you again for the allocation of the funds. It will be spent responsibly and you will see the product of it.
All right. All right. We're going to, I think, go in order the rest of the way here. So we will move to item six, Mrs. Frank.
Transfer ordinance number four, 2022 budget, first reading.
Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Ms. Livermore, good evening.
Good evening, council. Sorry, took me a minute to get up here. What you have before you tonight is an.
What you have before you tonight is an ordinance for the twenty twenty-two budget. If you look further down on your agenda, you will see the twenty twenty-two. Audit is on there for approval, and this ordinance cleans up all the budget line items that were found in the audit. To have gone over in some line items and under in others. So this ordinance, you've seen these before, just pretty much cleans up all the line items from twenty twenty-two.
This did not go to a committee, but are there any comments or questions on it? Okay, hearing seen on Mrs. Frank, item six, please.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes seven zero. Item seven, Mrs. Frank.
Resolution authorizing installment payment four through eleven of FTA repayment plan to be paid from emergency fund.
Is there a motion in a second?
So move.
Second, Ms. Livermore.
Hello again. The resolution you have before you tonight is the authorization to make the. Remaining FTA payments from the emergency fund.
This also did not go to committee, because we've paid a couple of these already. But I'll open it up for any kind of questions, comments from other members. Mr. Bider.
So we have payments four through eleven listed here. Obviously, we've negotiated a balloon payment for payment twelve. Do we have any idea where that payment will be coming from at this point? Hoping that we might not get to that point if we have some help from our federal legislators.
I mean, and so payment number twelve, which would be the balloon payment for the FTA, he's asking if we have any idea. Do we plan to hope to take it out of the emergency fund? Yeah, if nothing else happens, I think that would be. Our, our option.
Okay.
Would be to take it from there.
Are there other avenues we're currently exploring outside of emergency reserve?
No, there's not this point, no.
There will, I mean, that payment's not gonna happen until early next year, right? I think February, March timeframe. Are there additional conduits you're gonna be looking at later in the year?
I mean, we're gonna.
Something we're gonna look at through the budget timeframe as well?
We're gonna talk with PFM, do the stamp process and look at budget stuff to see if there's anywhere. But right now, as of right now, there's nothing, but we're gonna explore that as we work through that process as well.
Any other comments or questions? All right, hearing a scene, uh, hearing seen on then, Mrs., uh, did somebody say something? Okay, sorry. Mrs. Frank then on item seven.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes seven zero. Item eight, Mrs. Frank.
Thank you. Resolution to accept the fiscal year twenty twenty-two audit reports.
Is there a motion in a second?
So move.
Second. Mayor Slaughter.
Good evening, President Yoder, Vice President Bider, members of council administration. What you have before you is the fiscal year twenty twenty-two audits by Zelenkovsky Axelrod, and I believe Kim Stank. Is online for this item.
I am here and I have Justin Bell with me as well. Thank you for having us this evening. Do you want us to share our screen or do you want us just to go talk through the financial statements?
What's the matter?
Talk through it.
I mean, you could just talk through it. I mean, I just know if there's things you need to share, you can do that for the live stream, but.
Okay, we'll just talk through it then. The financial statements are very similar to prior years. The opinion is just what you probably anticipate. It is a disclaimer of an opinion again this year. We are hoping that in twenty-three, for that twenty-three audit, we can work towards. Either a qualified or unmodified opinion. It'll really depend on everything that goes through the, with the audit. So I'm gonna throw it over to Justin and he can just talk high level about your net position and your fund balances. Because I know that's one of the more important things that you guys like to focus on.
Okay, so pretty much on page four is your statement, statement of net position, so that's the overall. Entity of the City of Williamsport. It's a full accrual, so it includes your, you know, capital assets, long-term debt, your net pension liability. And, you know, your OPEB liability. So at the end of the year, there was a deficit net position of a hundred and twenty-five million. Again, not uncommon for governments to incur this because. Your OPEB liability is not funded and your pension liability as well. So it's definitely a not uncommon thing to see. Page six. Um, is your governmental funds, so mainly the big one, general fund that had a, a fund balance of seven point two million at the end of the year. Four point three million of that was unassigned. Um, so going from on page eight, you had an increase of two point one million in fund balance from. Twenty, from twenty-one to twenty-two in general fund, so you went from five million to seven point two million at the end of the year. Um, the other funds, your budget to actual was page ten. Um, that just yet shows budget to actual. Um, page eleven is your city hall operating fund, um, your proprietary fund. And then page fourteen and fifteen are your fiduciary funds, which are mainly your pension funds and some custodial funds. So it's your fire, police and other op, and other officers and employees. I mean, you have roughly a hundred, hundred and four million in your pension funds at the end of the year. Um, pages sixteen through the rest of the document are pretty comparable to last year. They're just your notes to your financial statements, so they're pretty comparable. So we won't go into them too much unless anyone has any questions about the notes. I mean, the RSI schedules for like pension and OPEB again are comparable to last year. So other than that, that was just a high level overview that we had, and unless there were any questions, that's all we had for the time being.
Okay. Uh, I'll turn it over to Mr. Bider. Anything from discussion in the finance committee?
Uh, no, nothing more that was of note to add. The only thing that I will say is that we're looking forward to twenty-three. So hopefully we can actually have one that has an opinion without the disclaimer on it. But if you could, again, refresh my memory, what is, is it lack of information that you don't have, that you're not giving an opinion?
Correct, so it's. In, included in the, the disclaimer of opinion. It goes through and talks about the reasons, but essentially it is not having the RVT included in there as well. As your component units and just the lack of information and the support for this, for some of that information.
Thank you. And just to clarify, so it's RV TA related information. Is it because the information cannot be obtained because of the investigation? Is it because it doesn't exist for some reason, or is it a lack of cooperation from RV TA? Or is it something else?
It is yes for all of, basically all of those, as well as even the city's information as well. We have some of that information, but we don't have all of the support for it.
So.
Testing controls for that period of time, et cetera.
So I get, let me ask it this way. From an internal city staff perspective, and then from an RV TA staff perspective. What kinds of things do you need? Um, and my anticipation is it's gonna be more directed at RV TA, but. When you say yes to my. Question of all of those, the one thing I think that we, we can't control, but we maybe have some ability to impact is cooperation of staff. I mean, it seems to me that, you know, RV TA is not necessarily cooperating in getting information for our audit. That's why I asked that question. If that's the case, what things specifically do you need from their staff to? Hopefully maybe impact this adverse opinion or whatever it is.
Sure. For the twenty twenty-three, as you'll recall, that's when RVT split off and became an authority. So they are a separate entity. Hopefully, they will, we'll have to do the analysis to see if they're still considered a component unit. It is possible they're still considered a component unit of the city. So, but there's a checklist that we'll need your team to go through, we'll need Jamie to go through that. And as well as the parking authority and RDA. And Justin, did I miss any? I think those are all, those are all your authorities, so because RV TA split apart in that year. Then you won't be controlling their details, their day-to-day activities. And what we'll do is we'll rely on their auditors and, and if they are a component unit. They can be brought in as a, as a discreetly presented component unit. And so we'll rely on their auditors for their report for twenty-three. If that makes sense.
Yeah, I guess what I'm trying to understand is, I mean, again, when I ask the question of why you weren't able to get information related to. Levels of cooperation, I, I had concerns that you were not getting the direct cooperation with RV TA. Since they're now their own individual authority. Um, and so I'm just really trying to understand what we can do to help mitigate that because frankly, it would directly. Positively impact our, our audit. So I'm not an accountant, so it wasn't completely clear to me. So, I mean, if, and if this is just a rabbit hole that really doesn't matter, please tell me, but.
That's fine, I, oh, go ahead, Jean.
Sorry, Kim. I think what part of the issue is, is I don't think anybody has all the documentation needed to back up the number. So I don't think the RV TA is not cooperating. It's just, we don't have. All of the back, backup documentation that would be needed to prove the number, so they can't be accurately proven. Was that, was that a good way to say, Kim?
Correct, and then even thinking about your fixed assets, you know, whose fixed assets were whose. So with the separation, those things, I think a line was kind of driven, like. Line was written so that you know whose assets are whose, whose debt is whose, and then you'll have, because. The current, the people who are there currently, so Jamie will have access to, for the city's perspective. They will have access to all of the documentation and support for all the numbers for twenty-three and later.
Gotcha. So it's really a documentation piece on their end. I got you. Thank you for clearing that. Do you know where? RV TA, RDA, parking authority, et cetera, the authorities are at with their audits? I ask that because clearly for us to have a clean audit, they also need to be up to date on their audits as well. Do we know where theirs all are at, at this point?
I'm not sure about RV TA. I'm in, I am in conversations with the parking authority. We've been going back and forth with them this week. They have not had an audit since twenty eighteen and the bank is looking for, to get them caught up, so. We're, we're gonna talk to her a little bit longer, a little bit further. We'll talk back and forth to see if we can assist them. And then RDA, we did the nineteen audit and we have the twenty ready. However, we need to receive payment from the nineteen audit before we can issue the twenty audit. And then there's a few things we need for the twenty audit, and then, you know, we can try to get them caught up as well.
Thank you very much. I wish I wouldn't ask the question. No, I, I'm, I mean, look, I mean, here's what, here's.
It's there in the.
Yeah, yeah, but still, I mean. It, it just means we're not gonna have to clean out for a while, that's why.
Yeah, it is.
I will say on a positive note, we have everything done for twenty twenty-three's audit to go to. The auditor, so, and, and everything looks much better, a lot more, we, everything can be documented, so. Twenty-three will be better, a hundred percent.
I spoke with the parking authority this week as well, to your point, I think President Yoder, to let them know that. We need them as a component unit to have their audits. For, in order for us to move forward, so they're well aware. I just spoke to them yesterday. I mean, I, I can't speak. For them, obviously, but spoke with them.
It's wild. Any other comments or questions on the twenty twenty-two audit? All right, um, hearing seen on Mrs. Frank.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes seven zero. We will move to item nine.
Resolution authorizing a lease agreement between the city and Cutting Edge Baseball LLC.
Motion in a second?
So move.
Mayor Slaughter.
Yes, good evening again, President Yoder, Vice President Bider. What you have before you. Is a lease agreement with Cutting Edge Baseball LLC, AKA The Crosscutters, to extend their lease. Uh, very few changes in this one. There was a minor typo. Thank you, Councilwoman Katz, caught that in Public Works the other day. In the insurance section, it said one million and then had two million in parentheses. That is supposed to be two million dollars worth of insurance in both places. I did update that typo and sent the updated document out earlier this afternoon. Other than that, very few changes. There were a few questions from Councilwoman Katz coming out of Public Works. I did get the answer to the scoreboard question and Councilwoman Katz, it's still under warranty. Uh, so if there is an LED light bulb that would need changed, we'd be able to run that through the warranty. Uh, other than that, it was reviewed in Public Works.
Thank you, Mayor Slaughter. Mrs. Katz, Public Works.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor, for getting the information. How long is the warranty? Did, did that come up? How, how long is the?
Yeah, it did not. I can find out for you, though.
Okay, because from what I understand, through the grapevine, that these bulbs are expensive. And to make sure that, you know, we're covered, we're covered with that. And other than that, I, this is the same contract we've been using for quite some time. So, uh. I don't have any other questions or, or comments. I think it speaks for itself. Vince, do you have anything?
No, not at this time. The mayor addressed everything that we had questions about in committee, so.
Randy?
Uh, no, I don't, Bonnie. Thank you.
Any other, um, thank, thank you, Bonnie. Any other comments from members? Mr. Mackey.
I don't know what page this is on, sorry. Page six, section H. Says if Major League Baseball discontinues maintaining the playing field under the current MLB City lease, is there, is there? We, we're not currently under contract. Our contract expired with Major League Baseball, is that correct?
It's about to expire. Yeah, we need to renew it this year, yes.
When, when does that, when does that expire?
I don't know the exact date off my head. Off top my head, I would imagine August, I think, or whenever the new.
I think.
Maybe it expired last year, maybe it did, I don't know. Yeah, maybe it has already expired.
So should, I mean, could. Should this language be in here if we don't currently have a contract with Major League Baseball?
That's more of a question.
MLB apparently no longer has an obligation to maintain the playing field, so the city would be in a position where it has to. Provide all the equipment to do that, so I think it's valid question as far as. I mean, if, if city's fine with saying, okay, if we don't renew that, we'll go ahead and do it. Or if the city wants to think, well, maybe we should, we should probably give that lease renewed just to make sure. I mean, I don't know how likely it is. I mean, I don't know how likely it is that it's from, that, okay.
Well, yeah, okay. I mean, it is, does Major League Baseball still have a representative at the field doing work?
Yes.
Even though we don't have a current contract with them?
Yeah, they're still there, don't worry.
Is that, is that problematic?
That, I don't, that's a question for their turn.
Well, to the best of my knowledge, we have no contract with Major League Baseball, but there's still a representative for Major League Baseball doing work at the field.
Through, through a third party, right?
You wanna go ahead and just?
No, you're good.
Okay, the third party, but they got, got contracts, third party.
That's, it's all part of the, I believe, what Mr. or Councilman Mackey's bringing up, so.
Yeah. I, if you go comfortable, if the city doing this, perhaps, if you go forward, you don't go comfortable with the city doing this. If it has to, then maybe you would want to get it at least in place with Major League Baseball before you move forward with this. Or at least renew that one. It sounds like they're interested, I would assume, but the conversation tonight.
Well, again, I, but, but I'm not, I'm, I'm not the legal expert here. I'm just asking if we currently don't have a contract with Major League Baseball and there's language in here saying essentially that we do and that they're gonna continue doing the work that they're used to, or, or were doing under the old contract, should, should we pass this tonight? I mean, is this, i- if we were to table this, is this gonna screw anything up? Cause I, the last thing I wanna do is screw anything up with the Crosscutters.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's more of a question for the Crosscutters. I.
Will they, I mean,
They start.
They start in like, I think, twenty, June sixth.
Is that our next city council meeting?
Are they allowed? I mean, is there an avenue for which they can, can, can play their season even if this contract? I mean, again, it's between us and the Crosscutters.
Right. I think it's similar to the question, what you're asking about MLB. Could they continue on without a lease agreement?
Okay, wow.
I don't, I mean, I don't know. It would be the day of, I guess. If they start the sixth, and I think our council meeting, our next one is the sixth, I think.
I believe so.
The fifth. The fifth. Uh, well, if they start the sixth and our council meeting is the fifth, then I guess we'll be okay.
I mean, we're be cutting it pretty close.
Yeah.
We have agreed.
Well, again, I'm, I'm just put, I'm just putting it out. Do we have any, any updates for Major League Baseball?
Yeah, it's just a. I actually asked them again today to send the contract.
Okay, and what was their response?
They said they would get it to me ASAP.
ASAP. Can we go back and amend this after we pass it for some reason, if we need to?
Well, uh, you theoretically you can, but it's in agreement. So if you, if you authorize it and you sign it, then you're saying that if Major League Baseball doesn't maintain this field, the city will provide the equipment to do that. So you can go, but once you have a signed contract with, uh, the Crosscutters, you can come back and, and say you wanna change it, but if it's already been signed by both parties, they can, they can hold to it.
Yeah, there's only. Excuse me. This is a one-year contract?
No, this is through twenty-thirty, I believe.
Twenty-thirty.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I, it, I, it, I, it would seem to me that this language should be removed, especially if this is five year. I mean, we don't know Major League Baseball's gonna be around in five years.
Yeah.
I don't know. Again, I know we're cutting it close here. Um, but, I mean, I, I'll, I'll defer to the, to the group here. I, I don't.
Yeah. Same. I mean, what's, what's the, what's the group's level of comfort taking the chance? That's what it really comes down to.
Personally, I don't.
Adam, I have a question. Uh, when is the Crosscutters lease up?
Uh, I, I assume that it's up.
It's, it's coming up. It's not up yet, no.
This would extend it.
Yeah, this is, it's, it's coming up. They just wanted to get it taken care of sooner rather than later. I wanna say maybe September, so I think we do have a little time.
Oh, okay.
That's fine.
So we're still operating under the old agreement. This is just, okay. Well, then, in, in that, in that case, I would make a motion to table this until we can get this language figured out. Maybe in two weeks, maybe ASAP, and Major League Baseball's world is two weeks, we can get something figured out by then. I don't know, but if, 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 if not, I think we need to maybe, you know, finesse this language a little bit, so.
I would second his motion to table.
All right, motion and second to table. Any additional comments, questions on the motion to table? All right, here you see none, Mrs. Frank on the motion to table, item nine.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy. Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes. Uh, motion table passes six zero. Um, thank you all. And, uh, Mayor, thank you very much. Let us know what happens over the next week or so. Um, we'll jump to item eleven, Mrs. Frank.
Resolution, construction of Fourth Street and Campbell Street, streetscaping.
Is there a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second. Mr. Scott, welcome back. But I had the foresight to knock this out earlier. We would have, but my bad.
Good evening again, Council President Yoder, members of council, Mayor Slaughter, uh, another resolution to present for your consideration. This resolution is toward, uh, construction, sir, contract for the streetscape on East Fourth Street and Campbell Street to Big Rock, uh, paving. Their base, their low bid was eight hundred, seven thousand, eight hundred, six dollars, seventy-five cents. We received four, uh, bids for this project and they were the low bid. Uh, a little bit about the project. It's on East Fourth Street from Basin Street to Mulberry Street, and then we're gonna jump over to Campbell Street between Third and Fourth Street. This is a streetscape. So there'll be new, uh, concrete curb, sidewalk, there'll be a brick band, um, behind the curb like you've seen in other parts of the city. Um, new street trees, period, streetlights, ADA curb ramps. And finally, they will mill and pave the S Street and have new line striping. The project is funded by CFA, which is the Commonwealth Financing Authority Multimodal Grant.
Um, thank you, Mr. Scott. Um, this did not go to committee, so.
We actually talked about it there.
We talked about it a little bit?
We did.
In Public Works?
We did, yeah.
Okay. Um.
We brought it up under other related items.
Oh, you worked that. That's right. I'm sorry, Randy. Um, Bonnie, Vince, anything of note in Public Works, even since it came up?
Well, we just wanted to get, uh, I, you know, out in the open, and if there were any questions, uh, uh, about this project, um, to get them talked about, um, Big Rock, I guess, is all set to go, no problems anymore. And, um, the one thing, um, Mr. Scott, I didn't, um, ask, the low bid was eight hundred and seven thousand, eight hundred. Well, that really is strange when you look at those numbers. Eight hundred and seven thousand, eight hundred, eight hundred and seven. Um, this is all, this is, is the low, this is the low bid and is everything covered under the, the, uh, program?
Yes, um, there was actually a quarter, twenty-five cent error we found in their bid, so it's actually eight oh seven, eight oh six and seventy-five cents.
Okay. Does that have to be changed then on the resolution?
Yes.
It looks like it is changed already.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, it, it's changed.
It's changed, okay. Okay, wanted to make sure, but this is all covered. There's no money that's coming out of our, our pockets right now, right?
That's correct. It's a, uh, multimodal grant.
I, I completely forgot to ask that when we were having this discussion. Other than that, we, you know, wanted to just bring this out and, and just have, um, just have a, a discussion. And Mr. Scott is on top of all of this. So I don't, I don't have anything else to say. Vince, Randy?
No, thank you, Bonnie. The one question I did have for Mr. Scott regarding this is what impact this might have to the flow of traffic or safety? Um, and, and because it's going to be primarily conducted off of the street, there's gonna be minimum impact to the flow of traffic.
That's right. The, 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 uh, street should remain open because the, uh, as you said, the work is, you know, from the curb behind.
Okay. Any additional comments or questions by members? All right, here you see none, then. This is Frank on item eleven.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Um, item twelve, Mrs. Frank.
Resolution authorizing an agreement between the Williamsport Bureau Fire and MES.
Is there a motion and a second?
Move that.
Chief Ongs, good evening, sir.
Good evening, Council President Yoder, members of council. Um, before you is a resolution for the purchase of fifteen SCBA air packs, thirty spare cylinders, or I should say thirty cylinders, and fifteen face pieces for an amount of one hundred forty thousand, two hundred fifty dollars. Um, it's with MES, uh, we've, earlier this year, I believe it was, we purchased, uh, or actually it was last year. Um, we purchased ten air packs, um, through the ARPA money. Uh, we are purchasing this through the CDBG money or funds. Um, I'm, I'm not sure if Jamie's still on, um, on the phone or not. She probably isn't.
Doubt it.
Yeah, I doubt it too. But, um, if there's any questions, I'll do my best.
Um, this did go to finance. Mr. Bider, anything to add from the committee?
No, there was nothing that we were going to add, um, about this. Obviously, coming through, um, CDBG funds, it was something that we don't have to worry about expending ourselves and obviously a very important piece of apparatus for our firefighters to have.
Absolutely.
Any additional comments or questions by members?
I have a question, Adam. Chief, does this, does this, uh, bringing us all up to date with, with this? Is that everyone covered now?
Uh, for the most part, yeah. We have twenty, um, we'll wind up with twenty-five, uh, air packs or twenty-five F's, twenty-five SCBA. So the first one should be here. I was told today sometime between, um, the middle and the middle of June and, uh, the first week of July. But it's been postponed before, so.
Well, how many more would you need at this point?
Um, probably, probably ten more to make sure that everybody has an air pack, but not everybody from the WBF needs an air pack immediately while they're working, um, at a fire like myself. We have thirty-seven firefighters. Um, but usually I'm not going into a burning building. I'm at the command post. Chief Kenny's at the command post. So, yeah, but, yeah, we could, uh, we could trickle in a few more, but, um, uh, the cost of them have gone up considerably.
So therefore this is gonna have to be budgeted then, because, uh, I can't remember what you said, how long these last. I, I don't remember that.
Um, they, they last anywhere between, uh, I think we have some air packs right now that are fifteen years old.
Okay.
So, uh, we do have a line item in capital projects for SCBA.
Okay. Fifteen years, we have enough time to put it in the budgets to start saving then.
Yes.
Okay, fantastic. That's all I have, Adam. Thank you.
Any additional comments or questions? All right, here you see none, then. Uh, Mrs. Frank on item twelve.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Uh, we'll jump to item fifteen, Mrs. Frank.
Resolution of the City of Williamsport requesting a Greenways Trail and Recreation Program Grant from the Commonwealth.
Is there a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second, Mr. Williams, welcome back.
Good to be here. So, uh, yeah, I'll be covering this one as well. Um, so this resolution will allow us to apply for Greenways Trails Recreation Grant, uh, from DCD. Uh, this would be used to implement portions of the city's twenty seventeen bicycle plan. So, uh, in conjunction with doing the Shaw Park improvements, uh, we're, uh, doing a CDBG funded improvement to, uh, implementing some bike lanes signage, uh, to do better connections to that park and also eventually to the Riverwalk. So this would supplement that CDBG funding. That would be the match for this.
All right, um, this one went to Public Works. Bonnie, anything to add from committee?
Nope. Um, and, uh, one of the questions I asked was for the, and I can never remember that name, Scott, uh, for the, the, uh, bike thing that we're doing, um, that's, uh, we're waiting for the, the, uh, plans to be set up and everything else. And you said, uh, we should start working on it. Thank you. Thank you very much. Um, uh, that this should be going, you know, uh, start working on that, uh, probably in a year, year, a year. So I think everybody's excited about that also. I know Ms. Mealy would love to hear more about having bike paths. And I think a lot of us would really, because, uh, I don't know about anybody else, but I'm seeing a lot more bike riders out on the streets now than ever before, which I think is great. Everybody's enjoying the sun, sunshine and fresh air. Other than that, um, I have nothing else to add to this.
Any other comments or questions? All right, here you see none, then. Mrs. Frank on item fifteen.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy. Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes seven zero. That's all of them that I have, right, Janice?
That's right.
Sixteen. Awesome. Um, item sixteen, except for filing finance committee meeting minutes from February twenty-fifth and March twenty, um, twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five. Is there a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second, comments or questions on the minutes? Hearing, seeing none, Mrs. Frank with item sixteen.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes. Motion passes seven zero. Item seventeen announcements, um, our next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be on Thursday, June fifth, two thousand twenty-five, seven PM here at Trade Transit Two, third floor. Um, City Hall will be closed on Memorial Day, uh, Monday, May twenty-sixth. Um, I'll also note, um, before other meetings, um, we're gonna have an executive session following the meeting related to matters of personnel. Um, upcoming meetings Tuesday, May twenty-seventh, eleven thirty AM, redevelopment authority, seven PM special council meeting. Um, we are on Tuesday having a special meeting for an information session related to home rule. DCD will be here to do a presentation. Um, members of the public are invited to not only listen and learn, but, um, ask questions, participate. Um, any media that is here or watching is, is invited to, um, come, listen, ask questions as well. Uh, we're looking forward to it. Um, so hope to see you here. Tuesday, June third, eleven thirty AM, Public Safety Committee meeting, one PM Finance, two thirty PM Public Works. Wednesday, June fourth, nine AM Economic Revitalization. Thursday, June fifth, seven PM City Council Meeting. Um, are there comments from members of the public? If you would come up, um, state your name and address for the record. Um, you have three minutes. Um, I'll, I'll time you and then when the clock runs up, I'll, I'll give you a nod and let, let you finish your, whatever point you're on.
I can do it in three. Uh, Robin Hannan, four sixty-six Heritage Hill Lane, Williamsport. Uh, I wrote this up so I would
Yep.
stay one point. Um, my partner and I own five properties in the city. Uh, we own properties on Seventh Street, Harris Place and the green space, uh, on Hepburn Street, Hepburn and High. Uh, all these properties are adjacent to the Row House, uh, eight oh two, Hepburn Street, that's owned by ID Washington Property Group LLC. Uh, in the last thirteen months, I have submitted thirteen online complaints to the City of Coats uh, regarding this particular property. All of the complaints have one common theme. Uh, regarding this particular property, all of the complaints have one common theme, the trash. Trash outside, out back, out front, um. Trash meaning, uh, mattresses, refrigerators. Uh, garbage on the gr- all this on the ground. Um, a dumpster that's filled to the top with barrels everywhere. Uh, again, thirteen online for the last thirteen months. I do have pictures, but you get my idea. Uh, these photos though. Uh, only reflect a hint of the frustration that myself and our tenants face on a daily basis. Uh, but this is not the reason we're here. I'm not here to complain about that particular property. I'm just trying to give you some background. My last complaint that I did file to the City, uh, Code Department was May sixth, sixteen days ago. It had to do again with the collection of trash. Um, there's also a, uh, ponding. Water that was, uh, created by the. Uh, owner who excavated a bank out, there, uh, the complaint also said about two garden hoses. That lead from the basement of this property down Harris Place Public Street into the, uh, drain. The water drain, and that's been there for two years. Again, that complaint was sixteen days ago. Uh, on. May sixth, when I filed the complaint, it was at five oh seven P M. The next morning at ten A M, I had. Four of these posted on our properties. Notice of condemnation, City of Williamsport Bureau of Codes. Rental property inspection ordinance one seven four nine dot O three of City of Williamsport. So we had to obviously, um, comply. Call codes, it was, uh, the enforcement officer is Gerald Evers. Without question. The condemnation posting on our properties the morning after was done as retaliation of what we did. It is targeting, it is harassment, and it is illegal. We will not be harassed by city officials. It's our constitutional right to submit a complaint. Um, we notified our attorney, he encouraged us to come to city council. Uh, he sent a letter e, uh, to the mayor. I don't know if, um, he would share that with you or not, uh, but. Again, I'm angry, I'm disappointed, I'm super frustrated. We were here for part of the, um, blighted property codes talk. There's a common theme. And pretty much we as citizens, uh, the neighbors, tenants. Are handcuffed, we're handcuffed by landlords that fail to do what's right. And everyone blames everybody else. Uh, we sat in on a, a, a hearing last week because Codes blames the magistrate. Our attorney says that the magistrates, they don't have any bullets in their guns. They can't do anything. They can fine, but it's up to the Codes Department to condemn buildings. This particular property has been a thorn. We've lived there for fourteen years. It's never been good. Previous owner was not good. The current owner fails to comply and it just, they kick the can down the road. That's not why I'm here again. I'm here because we were harassed and targeted.
Thank you very much. Can you, um, could you do me a favor? Could you repeat the, um, address, the addresses that you, that you listed in your? Did you write something up formally?
No, it was kind of for me.
I know, okay, can you just re-?
Yes, I can tell you.
Address are again.
Yes.
Please.
So.
All of the, both the property you noted, but then the properties where the notices went?
Uh, fourteen West Seventh Street. Eighteen West Seventh Street. Twenty-four West Seventh Street. Nineteen Harris Place and the two empty lots, the green space that's very nice on Hepburn and High. That's us. Adjacent to the Row House. Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
I appreciate it.
So.
Yeah.
Sorry, real quick. What, uh, did, did you list the property? Uh, with the trash?
Eight oh two Hepburn Street.
Oh, thank you.
And it has a bunch, eight oh two, eight oh four, eight.
It's a, it's a row home?
It's the row home, yep.
Hey, I'm sorry.
Please.
This is, this is why we reordered.
Yeah, sorry, I was making notes whenever.
This is why we reordered the process, so you could speak and then we could ask some questions.
That's perfect.
Yeah. So. Stop, stop me if I. Go too far here, but just generally speaking. I want to apologize. I'm just, that's just me apologizing. I'm sorry that that happened to you. Is there any? On those properties that you, you got the conden- the, the.
Condemnation, yeah.
Thank you for helping me with that. Had you ever received any other type of notices on?
No other retaliation.
No, I mean, no, no.
Other codes.
Retention to anything.
Uh, no.
Right, okay, yeah, I would just, I just wanted to make.
In fact.
I just wanted to make.
Furious when I saw it on all of our front doors.
Yeah.
Uh. And I immediately called Gerald Evers, said come down right now. And inspect it. He wouldn't because he was going to lunch. And then he said, I have to give you twenty-four hours. I said, no, you don't. Come down now. He came at two o'clock. He, he only had time, um, to go through one of the properties. He returned, that was a Wednesday, he returned on Friday and did the others.
Okay.
But again, that is not the issue.
No, no, I wasn't suggesting that it was.
Yes.
For my own.
Mm-hmm.
Curiosity.
Yeah.
So again, that, that was not my intention.
And if Codes, if we looked up Codes on May sixth, if they decided to go and post all of the, uh, places. In the neighborhood or in the city that didn't not have, was not up to date on their inspection, you know, but no, only us. Not, not even twenty-four hours later. It will not stop us from complaining.
No, you should, you should keep complaining.
I will.
Please. Yes.
But it doesn't matter. It doesn't help.
Mr. Allison.
It's a way for me to vent.
Um, I, I can't speak to the other property, but all of your properties are impeccable.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, it's amazing. Uh, the refurbishment that you've done there and, um. It's a, a gem in the, in the middle of the city there, so.
Thank you.
I'll back you a hundred percent.
Uh, one quick question, and again, I would repeat what Councilman Mackey said and generally apologize for what you experienced. I myself got involved.
As on a personal basis.
Yes.
Okay.
I myself got involved in city council, uh, because what I really wanted to work on was. Our, our city's properties and the blight and the condition of the properties throughout, so. Um, as, as the council member who sits on the Blighted Properties Committee, something that I've been. Wanting to do for quite a few years and that I'm working with others are, is looking at how we restructure the way we submit fees and fines. And then as part of that, being able to, to identify nuisance property owners.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and therefore hold them accountable. Um, whether it be. Continuous offenses that regard trash nuisance, whatever, uh, police activity, all kinds of, of variables that we're still working through, so. It is something that I don't take lightly. Um, and, and with that. Can you repeat the name of the, the, um, LLC that owned the nuisance property next to you there?
I D Washington.
Okay, thank you.
Property Group LLC. And the, the.
Thank you.
I complained about that property. He didn't even go to that property. He came to ours and posted.
Thank you.
And I'm sure he, it wasn't Gerald just doing this on his own.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ma'am, could I take a look at that paper just for a second?
Which paper?
The, the notice.
Are there other, um? Are there other, um, comments from the public? Yep, um, come up, um. Name and address for the record, three minutes and, and again, I mean, well. I'll, I'll give you a heads up and try to let you finish where you're at.
Good evening, I'm Bill Logue, and I live at eight twenty-four, eight twenty-two Second Avenue. And I have an old Victorian house and I'm very proud of it, and I'm working on the one next door now. Um, but I, I came to talk about, uh. Mike and, I've always been an advocate for the, uh, architecture in this town, and I've worked on it all my life and, uh. I was going to talk about, uh, confusion corners and the, the visual impression out there. Our, our city looks really pathetic with. Uh, I mean, uh, the blighted properties are endemic and the litter is bad. But, uh, I'm, I'm so encouraged to hear the redevelopment authority. I mean, they are just citing all the right reasons. For, uh. The validation of what I've been trying to, uh, get the city to pursue. And, uh, specifically, I'm here for a property I did over ninety-four, ninety-five. I was on the Historic Review Board and there was a lot of support for preservation then. And I tried to, I mortgaged everything I could and I bought seven thirty-seven West Third Street. Now owned by ECM Really. And now the, the property is being demolished through neglect. He doesn't fix the soffits, the soffits are rotting out, architectural details are rotting off the building. Codes, I called Codes, I never really got in touch with the Codes Officer. But, uh, I think they have talked to him and now what he's doing is putting sheet metal on the bottom of the soffits. Instead of, uh. Mediating the problem, he's creating a swimming pool up there in the soffit. And if that, if that's what Codes is telling him to do to remediate the problem. We've got some real problems with our Codes Officers. We, uh, it's ridiculous. He's making the problem worse than what it is. But this property is being demolished and by neglect, I mean, it's, they gave me awards for doing it and I wasn't looking for that. I was looking for some. Um. I was, I was looking to validate my position on the review board, what I was doing, but. It, it's making me sick to see this place fall apart. I have a year and a half of my life out of it. I know I'm boring some of you, but, uh. I'm not giving up on this property. I did too much work on it. I have pictures here if you want to see. But I guess that probably wouldn't be a good idea, um. It's bad. And the, the city coach is not doing his job.
Thank you, Mr. Logue.
Thank you.
And I support everything the redevelopment is, is gonna do, I hope. But, you know, we gotta, this work has to be done by people who know what they're doing and it seems like, uh. A lot of times you get people on old buildings who are contractors, but if they don't know what they're doing with old buildings. It's a different thing. It's a different animal. You gotta be flexible and you gotta be creative. And I really think this town, if we can get together on fixing up our housing. This place, our city is going to be a lot more vibrant. People are gonna want to come here to live. We got so many things going for this area. But our housing and the trash, we look like a community that doesn't care. So, uh, let's all try to work together. Cause everybody has something good to, to add to the problem to, uh, find any answer. And, uh, I just hope we can more work together and, and, uh. Improve the housing and track people this city that are gonna make it a, uh, successful and a desirable place to live.
Thank you very much, Bill.
Okay, that's my complaint for tonight. I have some other ones, but we'll save those for another night.
Sounds good. Appreciate it, Bill.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the public tonight? Any comments from members of council?
I do, Adam. Just to remind everybody, uh, this is Memorial Day weekend and Saturday, uh, eh, to. Go up to the Veterans Park and support what has been done up there and, uh. Be proud of what, uh, that committee has done. I mean, it's incredible. So, um, just letting people know, don't forget Memorial Weekend, what it, what it stands for and visit our Veterans Park.
I'll second that, Bonnie. Um, wish everybody a happy Memorial Day. Um. Thanks to our, uh, our families who, um, have members who've made the ultimate sacrifice. Let's keep them in our. Um, thoughts this weekend and, uh, everybody be safe. Certainly. Any additional, um, comments from council? Any, um, comments from the administration? All right. Any, um, comments, clarifications from the news media, John, you're good? All right, I think a motion is second for adjournment.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you all and have a good evening.